Looking at the agenda, the only thing that needs to be changed is on 10.1 and 10.2. That will be at the high school, at this site on the 17th because the Truth in Taxation meeting happens here and it's advertised or put on the tax statements already. So that was caught, this year it was not caught Ronnie, last year but we got it this year. Okay? So any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Make a motion, looking for a motion. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to public comments, there is nothing other than the wellness. Kimberly, you want to wait for that, right? Just do that, okay.
Yes.
Alright. So we will move on to 6.1, the U.S. Solar Report.
Thanks for having me here, everyone. I passed out some helpful, you guys didn't get it, sorry. I passed out some helpful handouts that will kind of guide you through what I'm going to talk about. I had a previous conversation with Brian and he said this would be a good conversation to have with everyone and get your thoughts on it. And first of all, who's heard of Community Solar? Is this new? You have, yay! So we're so excited. For the past year, we've been working with the county on finalizing their solar ordinance and just this past month they did. They voted to move forward with it, so now permitting solar projects is much, much easier. We have five projects already leased with some local landowners that we're hoping to move forward in permitting in the next couple months. And with those projects, we're going to be building community solar gardens which are around 10 acres of land filled with solar panels. It's an Excel Energy program. Essentially what happened about five years ago, I've been working with this program since the beginning. Excel Energy is required to get a certain amount of solar power in their grid and this program helps them meet that standard. So essentially, I work all around the state building these solar gardens and a huge part of that process is getting subscribers to subscribe to the electricity that's produced from the panels. So why don't we open this presentation first and I can kind of run through it. Sort of brief introduction. U.S. Solar, we're based out of Minneapolis. We're a Minnesota company. We've already built around 25 community solar gardens around the state of Minnesota. We work only in Excel territory, a little bit outside of Excel territory. We have a garden up in Duluth. We also have some gardens going up in Illinois and New York, but our main base is Minnesota. We're all Minnesotans. And we got started with this program right when it got started in Minnesota about five years ago and we have over 160 projects in the pipeline in different stages of development. I personally am developing around 20 gardens in the next year or two, which I'm very excited about, but will be, I'll be very busy. So that's a little bit about us. We're based out of Minneapolis. You can see me driving around the state, subscribing these community solar gardens and also developing them. And then this little map, it's a very short page, but you can see this is where we have all of the projects in Minnesota. And like I mentioned, this program is specific to Excel Energy, so in order to take part in it, you have to be an Excel Energy customer. The city of Glendon just signed up to be part of one of these gardens, which we're very excited about, as well as a bunch of-
City of Glendon?
Yes.
They're not all Excel.
There are meters that are in Excel.
One side of the street.
Correct, yes.
The other side isn't.
Yep. The meters that are in Excel, we signed them up. So we're very excited about that.
Oh, I called, nope, snowstorm.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Half the town was lit up and the other half wasn't.
Oh, which one was lit up? Was it the Excel side?
No.
And just for the record, I'm not an Excel employee. We're an independent company, so we're an independent developer. We just work with the program that was created by Excel Energy, so. But this is also, in a nutshell, Excel territory. So we basically develop gardens wherever there's Excel territory. And the next page is a very short list of our subscribers, so like I mentioned, a huge part of the program is we build these gardens, they start generating electricity. Excel Energy buys that electricity from the garden so that they can meet their mandate on their electric grid. They have more solar power on their electric grid. And then whoever's subscribed to that electricity that they're buying, they pay them back for that electricity in the form of a bill credit on your Excel Energy bill and there's pretty great savings. So that's kind of the best thing about this program and why I'm here is because Excel is actually offering some pretty great savings on electricity through this program. And I'll get to that, but this is a brief list of our subscribers. We have a bunch of school districts, Becker Schools, sorry, I have to read this, Watertown Mayor Public Schools, Hopkins Schools, Sibley East Schools, Orono Schools, Becker Schools. I personally just signed up the city of Minneapolis, the city of Scandia, the city of Woodbury. We also have signed up the city of St. Cloud, Annandale, Rogers, Robinsdale. We're partnered with the Minnesota Twins as well, where they're solar partner, so they're also subscribing to a few of our gardens, which we're very proud of and which is pretty fun as well. So the nitty-gritty of the program is we look at the district's electric usage, which I've already done, and we say, you guys use this much electric, electricity, that means you would use this many solar panels. And we would assign you to a certain number of solar panels in one of these five gardens that's going up. They're all over by Felton. You guys would actually take up more than one garden, which I'll get to in a little bit. But, so we would assign you a certain number of solar panels in these gardens, they would generate electricity. Excel Energy buys that electricity at a higher rate than their retail rate because right now solar is more valuable to them. So they buy that at a higher rate and then every month on the district's electric bill, you'd have all of your normal charges, your usage charges, but then on your bill is a new line that shows a bill credit which reflects Excel Energy buying electricity from your panels and paying you back for that. And because that rate is higher than your usage rate, for many cases, it could pay for your entire electric bill or give you a pretty big discount on your electric bill, which is exciting. And then you just pay us a monthly subscription rate, which is at a discount. Whatever Excel buys from you, ours is a cent less, our subscription rate. So, and I can break that, that's a lot of information, I understand, and I can break that down on the next page that shows the rates for Excel Energy. And another great thing about this is it's a 25-year program, it's a 25-year contract with us. Excel is also contracted for 25 years to buy the electricity at these specific rates. So that's what's amazing for school districts and cities and towns and counties. They can sign up for this program and they know what Excel will be buying their electricity at for 25 years. So they can count on in year one, Excel Energy buying the amount of electricity that they're assigned for .1033 cents per kilowatt hour. The following year, that rate goes up. Excel buys it at .1057 per kilowatt hour. So every year, the district will be able to calculate how many bill credits they would get on their Excel Energy bill and the amount of savings they would get from Excel, which is pretty amazing. And these, these aren't the technical names, but these are just some of the locations Brian sent my way that would be applicable to the program. But the best part is the next page with all the arrows, and this should be the first slide because it's the most fun. So the school would be able to save from this program almost every year around $20,000, which is pretty exciting. From looking at these locations that Brian sent me and the amount of electricity that's used at these locations, we were able to estimate that the average electric consumption of the district is around 1.9 million kilowatt hours roughly. So if we were to assign you solar panels from the garden that generates that amount of electricity, that 1.9 million kilowatt hours, Excel would be buying that electricity. And then every month, you would get your regular electric bill with Excel Energy and then be buying that amount of electricity at the starting rate, .1033. And then you'd be paying us a monthly subscription rate at .0933, which is always one cent less. So for 25 years, this is the structure of the program, there are no surprises. You know, you know the rates that Excel is buying electricity at and you know what you're paying us for 25 years and the savings is pretty amazing. For a school district, it's around $20,000 a year. So you can see the cumulative savings for 25 years of the program is over $460,000 over those 25 years.
And so then why does the rate go down in year six?
We also factor in degradation of the panels. We factor in about a .05 depletion of production with the panels every year.
Who maintains them?
What?
How are they maintained?
Yep, we hire locally, local maintenance workers to check in on them. We do, another exciting thing that's actually not mentioned in this proposal is depending on what the landowner wants, we also do native and pollinator-friendly habitats in, in the solar gardens. So we do a lot of native upkeep, hire, we hire local landscapers, but we also fix them But they're pretty self-sustaining. We've been through many winters with our solar gardens and we haven't really come across any issues with them yet. We monitor them remotely as well. And our gardens are on trackers, so we're able to move them remotely. And if they're covered with snow, we can move them and they've always just slid, the snow has melted or slid off, or if it's become a huge issue, we just have one of our maintenance workers go and shovel it off. But really, it's only been, with the main snowstorms that we've worked with, it's only been about a day of snow coverage on our panels and then they're back to around 100%. Yes, I bet there are questions. I'm happy to answer them. Don't be shy. It's a new program.
You mentioned that Excel, I just want to make sure that I understand this. Excel is paying a higher rate on the solar.
Correct, yes.
So my question then is, as we look at this, this rate that they're, of course, our rate is then based on that higher rate.
Correct. The one cent off. You mean the subscription rate that you pay us?
Well, we're going to be getting one cent off based on, but I guess my question is, if they're paying, I'm just wondering on, is there, is this the rate, when we're looking at the rates that people that do not have the subscription, any other Excel customer, are they going to be paying once that same rate? Are they going to be paying one cent higher?
Who's paying the deficit, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, because it's like, it's got to go somewhere, somebody's got to pay.
Yeah, somebody's got to pay for it or else you're in deficit, which I would guess you're not.
Great question. So the beginning of this program, it was subsidized, but moving forward, Excel, especially with this current rate that the district would be signed up for, Excel, moving forward with the program, announces the value of solar to their marketplace, how much they'd be willing to pay for solar for 25 years. So in the original form of this program, it was subsidized, it was a special program, but then it was recently changed in the past year or two to the point where Excel just basically says the value of solar to its market. And they set that rate and that's what you see in this form for the 25 years. Excel is saying, we are willing to pay so, this amount for solar in this year and this year and this year, and this is its value to us for 25 years.
Oh, so year 25, all that says, .1791, it may be significantly higher?
Nope, that's the rate that they're buying it at.
Okay.
Yep, so they're also in a contract, they're in a 25-year contract with us, which is also great security, no matter what happens in the market, in the energy market, in, in Excel's market, they are locked in to buying the electricity for 25 years at the rates that's in this proposal. So you know, no matter what happens, they're buying it from you at that higher rate and they're paying you back for it. And then another exciting thing, which we didn't get to, residents will have the opportunity to sign up for this program as well, which is pretty exciting. So we're launching a big residential program and residential people will get to sign up and benefit from this program also.
At what point would this school district not be eligible? You talked about eligibility when we get to the back of these questions, is there any reason why we wouldn't be, why we would not become eligible anymore?
It's pretty much connected to if you're an Excel customer or not. So if you're no longer an Excel customer, you're not eligible for the program. That's the main requirement.
There's no other, any, any other reasons why we would be dropped at any point, so?
No. If Excel's territory were to change, but it's still connected to you not being an Excel customer, if you closed all of your buildings, again, you probably wouldn't be an Excel customer then. If we were to disappear as a company, number one, Excel is still contracted to buy the electricity, so even if we disappeared as a company, we have management set up where either another financier would take over, one of our investors would take over the garden because obviously that's how they get their investment return. The garden still has to be running at 100%. So the garden would still be operating, you would still be getting your bill credits, very minimal risk with this program. And we deal with the maintenance, snow removal, like I mentioned, repairs, if a panel needs to be updated, if a garden needs to be fixed, we do all of that and we never charge you extra for it. So we own and maintain the garden, there's no upfront fee to sign up, the district would honestly just sign up for this program, reserve its spot in the garden, nothing would happen until it's up and running. We start construction this spring of 2019, so nothing would happen, it's just about reserving your space. And then when the garden's up and running, that's when you start receiving your bill credits on your Excel Energy bill.
So let's say we signed up for it and that would be a savings to us, but anybody else in our district who chose not to sign up for this, to be a resident, sign up for this?
Yeah.
Everybody else is going to be paying for them?
No, it won't be increasing their electric rates. The original program, because it was a specialized solar program, it was the Renewable Rewards Program, I believe it was called, it increased rates by .0003 cents, very, very minimal, but that program has changed since then. So your residents wouldn't be seeing an increase because of these gardens.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is this something the district would be interested in signing up for?
Well, we're not going to have action, we want to get it tonight to the board members just so that they could-
Absolutely.
-look at it and then we can-
Digest.
Right. Because-
I think what everybody's kind of wondering, and I think Brian, you're alluding to a little bit, is that correct? Where, so you, these rates is basically a penny more than what, you know, you'll be, you'll be paying it for, basically a penny more, you're setting the rate.
Correct.
So when we look at that, I think we're all probably sitting there scratching our heads, where does the profit comes in? So is it, then that excess, are you then able to, that's what we're asking. Is the idea that electricity is going to go so high that, you know what, this will be a screaming deal and somehow Excel has to profit off of this? And that's what everybody's scratching their head kind of wondering right now, is that correct?
Yeah, great question. It's actually something I didn't touch on and I apologize.
Or they're getting a tax benefit from it. I'm just curious, you know, if you're just three street-
You're going to tap, tap it, right?
Which one is it?
Yeah, so essentially with you guys, the way the savings works is, so this is based off of 100% of your usage. You have the excess bill credits because it's obviously more than what Excel is charging you for. If you have any leftover bill credits at the end of the month, they roll over to the next month and you can apply them to that bill. If you have any left over at the end of that month, they roll over to the next month and the next month, and then at the end of Excel's calendar year, they cut you a check and pay you back for the bill credits that you haven't used. So it's a great incentive to actually bring down your electric usage in some form because you would have more leftover bill credits at the end of the year and a bigger check from Excel. Does that answer your question?
No.
With the savings?
No. What my, no, what my question was, when I looked at this from, just from the other standpoint, it didn't seem like this makes the greatest financial sense to Excel. Because if you're paying a dollar more, or excuse me, a penny more than it's producing for us, what my question was, is it some, just, is it like a tax incentive for Excel? Or is it, when you look at year 25, although you're paying that amount, are you able to sell it because of the rate of electricity? I'm just trying to figure out like how this makes sense from a business standpoint. So how is this benefiting Excel? That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, absolutely. Excel gets to claim the renewable energy credits.
Okay.
So that's the recs, that's what allows them to state how much solar they have on their grid and they get to claim that electricity as the room technically.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yep, so that's how they benefit from the program is they get to keep the renewable energy credits, which are basically worth, I believe, one cent a kilowatt hour.
Okay, that's cool.
Yeah.
Are we on any kind of an off-peak program in this district?
It's different for every meter. Some of your meters are probably small, general, general, I'm not sure actually what you're signed up for with Excel.
We've got, we've got some.
And we can work with that as well. Many of our subscribers are on that. Yeah, it's very, very exciting. It's happening all around the state. We work with many school districts, municipalities, and they're all pretty excited about it. It's a very easy way to save some money on your electric bill and also support diversifying the electric grid, diversifying businesses in the area. This is going to be benefiting your landowners. The more subscribers we can get for these community solar gardens, the more we can build in the future as well. That's a good sign that the community supports this program. So the more we have signing up, the more gardens we can build and the more successful this program is as well.
So just so I'm, so I'm clear on this, this is setting the electricity rates for 25 years?
Correct, yes.
My question for that, people that are not on this-
Yes.
Is this assuming that their rates are going to be the same as these rates? Is this setting the rates for everyone or theirs are, theirs may be higher or lower if you're not on this?
Their rates will be the same as every regular Excel customer if you're not subscribing to it. So this, just, these rates just apply to people who choose to be in the program. And if you're not in the program, you're a regular Excel customer with their regular rates.
And, and that's where, what I'm trying to figure out, because if they're paying a higher rate for this, for solar energy-
Yes.
My question is, yes, it's locking in the rates for 25 years.
Correct.
But is that the potential that a regular user may actually have a lower rate than what these are set up for?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
There's where the, because again, we're locking in for the 25 years, we're getting the cent off.
Correct, yes.
But we're also assuming that when we do this, we're locking in at, assuming that energy may be going up higher than what the solar might be in 15 years.
Correct, yes.
And if it isn't, then we're actually paying a higher rate to be involved in this than what a consumer that's not in the program would have.
No, because it's only $1,600, $20,000 a year. It's about $1,600 worth of savings, $1,650 a month if you broke it down for the district. So whatever our bill is, this is probably, what's the usual utility bill around here? 30?
Well, and I get the savings per month based on this, based on the penny.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but what I'm, what I'm trying to find out is, let's say that the regular customer, year 10, has a lower rate, which could, could happen.
And that's a great point. That is the variable of the program, but over the past 10 years, Excel has only increased the rates by 2.5% on average every year. So the variable of the program is, yes, we don't know what Excel is doing with their rates. They absolutely could go down, but over the past 10 years, and this is on Excel's website, they've had an average rate hike of point, of 2.5% a year.
That's what I would, if there's, because what I'd like to see is, alright, with this program, here's what we're locked in for. Here's what the trend has been the last, so if we project that same trend, here's what the rates would be for the regular user.
Yes, great point.
Because otherwise, we're locking into something that somebody else 15 years down the road, it may not be as economical, yeah, we're locked in at this rate and we're getting a cent off of, but again, if we weren't in the program, the rates may be actually lower.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we saved a penny, but we're saving a penny on a higher locked-in rate.
Absolutely, that is the variable of the program. Yep, yes, but-
Of the percent that we would be, possibly, of the percentage of the possibility of the savings of 1,600. So, so the only deficit it could be would be 1,600 a month or 20,000 or roughly, if the rate goes up, correct? Or could it actually be higher?
I'm saying this could be higher than the regular rate that everybody else that's not in it. But that's why I'd like to see that 2.5 and-
Absolutely. Excel has a graph on their rate hikes over the past 15 years and it's been consistently going up over the past 15 years, so I can happily-
Yeah, if you would get me that, then that way I can just put on a comparison on what that would look like compared to this.
Kind of like a variable interest loan. I mean, you can get burned or you can make a bad-
Right, that's-
Absolutely. Yes, I get where you're going with that, yes. I'm happy to do that.
What happens if 25 years is up? Do you re-contract or do you-
The panels will be at 80% production in year 25 actually, so they could still produce a ton of electricity. We would love to continue the program, we have options to continue the program with our landowners, but it's all dependent on what Excel wants to do. So the dream is to keep going after 25 years, but basically we reevaluate the program in year 25.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, so I will do that. I will show you comparison of the Excel rates over time and estimated rate hikes that we see happening in the future based off of their average rate hikes and how much the school would save in those situations with this program. And again, I go back to this, this is a set rate with Excel Energy, so that takes away a lot of the risk. In the beginning of the program that I worked in, the program was called the Applicable Retail Rate Program. And it's basically the bill credits mirrored whatever Excel's retail rate did, which provided a ton of savings and was very exciting, but it based a lot of its savings off of what Excel was doing every year with their retail rate. As opposed to this, you know how much they're buying from you, what that rate is for 25 years, there's no mystery with it. But the variable is, we obviously can't contract Excel to raise the rates a certain amount every year, but we can show you what they've done in the past, which has been pretty consistent.
What is the, what is the percent increase that's figured out over these 25 years each year?
This is based off of, we use, oh, when I took that off, we use a 2.5 rate hike for Excel.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay. Yes, great, so I will provide you with the information and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Alright, moving on, 6.2, Kimberly.
That was interesting. Oops, excuse me. Here, welcome. So thanks for letting me come tonight to present. Time goes fast, it seems like I was just here last year, but it's going really fast. The information that you have on the first page, just have a list of our community, our committee members and then which section of the district that they come from, whether they're representing at which site. A couple changes with our committee, some things we're very excited about. We have two parent reps this time. One, as you can see, is working with the Duluth Elementary, is a parent and a para there. And another is a Glendon-Felton Elementary Parent Group member. So we're hoping to have consistency of input-
So thanks for letting me come tonight to present. Time goes fast, it seems like I was just here last year, but it's going really fast. The information that you have on the first page, just have a list of our community, our, our committee members and then which section of the district that they come from, whether they're representing at which site. A couple changes with our committee, some things we're very excited about. We have two parent reps this time. One, as you can see, is working with the Dilworth Elementary, is a parent and a para there, and another is a Glendon Felton Elementary Parent Group member. So we're hoping to have consistency of input throughout the year with the different things that we work on. As well, what you'll notice is that we're very excited about the next part. We have been trying for years to get some student representatives on the committee, and it's not that they haven't been interested, it's just that the time we meet does not always work with the time available for the students. So this summer, I contacted Hannah Erickson, she is the Student Council Advisor at the high school, and asked her if she'd be willing to seek out some members of the Student Council who would be willing to sit on the committee. And she emailed back right away and contacted the committee, and there were two available and interested. And so far, we've had one of the students at each of our meetings this fall, one in September and one in November. And I'm excited to say that they're contributing members. I mean, they're sitting around a table with anywhere from ten to thirteen adults and some interesting discussion takes place, and they've both been a contributing part, which is great. The last two members that you noticed on the committee end up being our ship members, the statewide health improvement partnership members, and both Karen and Corinza are very helpful. At least one of them is at each meetings, at each of our meetings, and they are available for advice, for support, sometimes financial. If we are sending people to some summits or some in-service, they'll pay sub-pay and they'll pay the cost of sending us as well. So we're very, very thankful for that partnership. They work with, I think, now up to thirteen different districts, and they are always very insightful and really easy to work with, in my opinion. You'll notice our account balance there. We really don't have too much of an expense throughout the year. Two things that we have focused on, I have listed there that last year and the year before, we did a January Week of Wellness, and then in March, we encourage all DGF employees to take part in the March Madness as well, and that's where our expenses have come through. One of the things with last year's January Week of Wellness, we worked hard to try to include every person who works with DGF, from school board to bus drivers to maintenance personnel and food service workers. With number three, we generally end up having a small focus at each of our sites. With the Dilworth Elementary and the Glendon Felton Elementary, you see it's the Healthy Snack Program, and right now, we're in the fourth year of that. This last spring and into this fall, we had talked about possibly having a family cap for families that have a lot of students in the elementary, and we brought it to Lindsay's attention to bring back to you, and thank you for your support as well. But we, we do realize that there are lots of costs with larger families. So we were thinking that since there ends up being a family cap for sports fees and activity fees, that maybe this would be helpful as well. So what we came up with our discussion is that the first two children for the Healthy Snack Program, they would pay the forty dollars each. The third child would get in at half price, and then any others would be free. So we've capped that family cost of the Healthy Snack for the year at a hundred dollars. And if you look at that second page that's attached, that ends up being our flyer that we sent out at the beginning of the year, some things that we added to the flyer from past years end up being in the middle of it, just a quick, easy way for parents to be able to find how to pay online, because that was a concern with not this year, the eighteen, nineteen year, but with the seventeen, eighteen year, that it was new to all of us. And so that was added, and I asked John Jacobson for his exact wording and we used it. The other part that ends up being new, just that we ran kind of a cost analysis that if people were to provide snacks from home, it would be about seventy-two dollars a year. The cost of the district is fifty-two, so we always think it's a bargain, forty dollars for that. And again, I can't thank you enough for your support. Here's what we know, we know our kids are hungry, and for lots of, lots of the kids, you know, there's not going to be a snack at home. In fact, early on when we were talking about this, Mr. Tigerson and I had the conversation, and this is years ago, Brian, when we were talking about maybe expanding it to the middle school if it goes well, we know that that's not cost-effective and we can't do that, but we have lots of our middle school kids who are hungry too.
And they're always hungry.
And they're always hungry, yes. Back to number three on the front, at the middle school, Grab and Go Breakfast has been a huge success here. Chelsea just reported at our November meeting that we have about a hundred and thirty kids who take Grab and Go Breakfast here. That's a third of the middle schoolers. That's amazing, and that doesn't count the kids who eat breakfast in the lunchroom. It's been a program that's been running here a little bit longer, but teachers are very used to it. You know, if the kids aren't cleaning up their own mess, we'll get on them. The kids who are coming over from the Glendon site, we want to make sure that that breakfast is left open for them, so if they need to, if they get here on the eight twenty-three bus and class starts at eight twenty-five, there are kids who can just take their breakfast right into class. They finish it, dispose of it in that first hour and move on. At the high school originally, the thought was, from Chelsea's point of view, that it would be a second breakfast, so that hasn't happened. It ends up being a grab and go over there as well because of not being able to add the, the time between first and second hour. She mentioned at the November meeting that that is growing a little bit too. They're at fifty to sixty each morning. She'd like to see that grow more, either by some more promotion through the school or student, you know, student influence from those who are participating, because that ends up being about, I don't know, a seventh or an eighth, I guess, of the student body. And part of it is that lots of kids might not get there, you know, in time for it. Maybe they're just not aware of it, maybe teachers aren't allowing kids to bring the food in, and I totally understand that as a classroom teacher, you know, that needs to be something that's worked on. But with the committee talking about it, we knew that there was a late lunch last year, like a twelve fifty lunch, so that's one of the main reasons why we wanted to have something accessible earlier. Number four, just ends up being mentioned, mentioning the things that we work on throughout the entire year at our four or five meetings. Sometimes we will add a May meeting if ship thinks that it's important, as well if we have some things at the end of the year that need to be taken care of. One other personal one that I'd put on there is I know that John Jacobson has provided a, a new set of a, a template for meetings, and we'll try to be using that one throughout, at our last two meetings, as well as getting all of past minutes online as well. Number five, just mentioned specifically some of the things that ship has helped us with, and the last one listed, the bike fleet is the most recent. At our November meeting, Tracy Tullifson reported about how that has been extremely beneficial as well to the district. Tom Critchley right now is the staff personnel who is certified with the training, and he deals with the fifth graders in that unit. They've taken the bikes out to Buffalo State Park when the fifth graders have gone there. Tracy reported that it, through community ed, there was a summer bike club, and she herself was part of that. And she said what she is continued to be surprised with is the number of kids in our district who do not have bikes of their own. So she said that some of us might be surprised that those fifth graders are tickled to be able to have those bikes out at Buffalo River State Park or during the Fayette Unit. So something that a lot of families might take for granted, we are really fulfilling a need within the district. Number six, I'm just open to questions. I might not have answers for you right now, but I'll let you think about some that you might have, as I just mentioned this last part. So the attached pages, you saw the Healthy Snack Letter that we used, we'll update that for the family cap going forward with nineteen twenty. Then I just have a sample of the November minutes, we just met last Monday, and attached to that ends up being our School Wellness Policy Action Plan that ship helps us with. I guess on that document, maybe a question that you have, and I'll comment on what I can, is our, one of our goals, the fifth one, says, "Consider Funding the High School Water Request," and I know that Lindsay has kept you up to speed with that, that a high school teacher had submitted a request last spring, just about that a water filling station would benefit.
I just actually whispered that to her.
Yeah.
I said, I thought.
It was, you know, between three and four hundred dollars, but the, the high school staff's reps' position was that it would help any members of the community who might be walking, we'd like to, you know, encourage that, visiting athletes, our own athletes, et cetera, anybody who happens to be visiting. The next thing with number five you see is that it says, "Student Requested Consider Water Bo, Water Bottles in the Middle School." That just came up this fall, that some students have mentioned that there, there ends up being some water usage, water bottle usage at the high school, depending on the class, and it's just something that the committee is talking about. We're not saying that we want water bottles throughout the school. I know at the middle school, when we've talked about that, you know, lots of us as middle school teachers have said, "We don't feel that any student is denied water. There are plenty of water stations around." You know, we've also talked about that maybe it's something that ends up being a perk with, you know, increased maturity. Our kids here at the middle school don't get open campus for lunch either, you know, it's not something that we would want. Another privilege that our middle schools don't have is they don't take their computers home. At the high school, they do. So we're just, it's just a conversation about how can we get the kids to drink more water? Is that something we'd want in the classroom? Our classes aren't that long at the middle school, they're forty-five minutes. So it's just something that ship has really started having a conversation with all thirteen of their districts. How can we increase water usage in a safe way? Our next meetings are in February and April, and that's about all that I have right now, just that we are a busy committee, we don't meet every month, but we feel that the work that we do is very important. We appreciate board support, Lindsay being there, we appreciate that.
So the Wellness Committee is making a recommendation to have a fam, family cap next year?
Yes.
Okay, so that's something that.
Mm-hmm.
Board would have to.
Yep. Remember we talked. I brought it up, yep. We would, it's for next year's fees when we do.
Right, nineteen twenty. And we haven't really looked into, you know, how many families in the elementary would that benefit? We just thought any that it would. It's certainly not going to be a high number, people are having fewer kids, but those few families that it might benefit would be a nice step in the right direction.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I think that is something that we need to look at, is getting that water filling, water bottle filling.
All they gotta do is bring it up at Operations. That's, that's all it comes down to.
Yep, yep.
Okay, let's put that on Operations the next meeting.
No, I mean, they've got it on Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
So it's.
And I, you know, you know, I know that there's water fountains in the, you know, in the hallways and things like that. I'm sorry, kids don't even have time to go to the bathroom, let alone stop and take a really good, healthy drink of water. So I'm, I'm a water person, and it's important that those kids are getting water. I mean, some of these kids are getting headaches and things like that because they just don't have enough hydration in them, and then they have to sit and focus, and so I think we need to step up with that. So, okay, all right. Moving on to six point three, Board Committee Reports, and you guys had Operations?
We did. We had Operations tonight. They have been busy. There's all kinds of stuff going on. So they did blood testing between the Dilworth site and Glendon site. Dilworth site, everything checked out fine. The Glendon site, there were three main areas of concern and of which they've already addressed it and fixed it. They had to replace parts of the sink, is that it?
Parts of the faucets and things like that, and then new tests were taken and sent. The results aren't back yet, but sounds like it's being well handled.
They have a few projects that'll be going on through the holiday break, one of them being replacing some carpeting issues here in Dilworth, upstairs in the science lab and the office there attached to it, the carpeting is kind of curling up, so they're gonna take care of that over that break, and then there's some adhesive coming up through the Glendon site, the tiles, so they're gonna take care of that as well.
Is that on the new carpet that was put in?
Yes.
So is that under warranty then?
Yeah, it's all been, Jeff's actually coming in and pulling up all of it upstairs, and, and what happened with the Glendon site and the elementary classrooms is, there's some of the classrooms on the east side, so like the third grade classrooms, and when you go in there, you'll see maybe some lines along the seams where it'll be black streaks, and it's all been tested, there's no mold, nothing like that, it's just the adhesive. We've actually had, had, through Health and Safety, had chemical testing done to make sure that it's not the issue. But what's happened evidently through the tunnels, you got heating through the tunnels right directly below those rooms, and some of the moisture has seeped up through the concrete, which then has gotten in with the adhesive behind and bubbled up some of the adhesive. And so there's a chemical that they can just spray on and get rid of the stain. Again, it's just adhesive, so that'll get rid of that stain, and of course, the other big one over Christmas break is the plumbing at the Glendon site. That's, that'll be a costly piece, but.
A sign of an old school.
A sign, exactly. It's, you know, it's galvanized and, and probably stuff from the fifties.
So we won't be receiving a bill for the carpeting part though?
No, 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 nope, nope.
Like Brian said, they're gonna continue with the plumbing issues where they had that water leak through the ceiling. They've replaced the ceiling tiles, but they're gonna continue to change that galvanized piping into copper. That will be over the holiday break as well. But otherwise, they have been busy with just a lot of general maintenance. The boiler maintenance has been going, it sounds like James is really on top of a lot of that stuff, so that's good to hear. He's fixed a lot of problems that were there prior to him coming, so that's been good.
Somewhere along the line, in the next year or two, or if we can't find parts, the clock system, sounds like we have half a Simplex system and half of the system is a company that no longer exists. So we'll have to make a decision on whether or not we finish it out with Simplex, who is now owned, I found out tonight, by our favorite, Johnson Controls. So, that's coming up. Also, the Suburbans are going to, we're gonna run out of time before the end of the school year. Is it one of them, Brian, or both of them?
One, it's just the one. We've got one that, the VIN number is such, it goes by the, the actual date of coming off the line, and we thought we were gonna be able to get through eighteen, nineteen without replacing it way until the summer, but we can't use it in March or April, I think is when it goes out, Doc and Eileen. And again, it all goes right from the date when it came out of the plant, and so that's the date that they use. It doesn't matter when you actually got it off the showroom floor or anything else like that. So it is what it is, and, and we'll add it to the capital list. Originally, we planned to do it this year, we were looking, hoping to wait until the summer, but is what it is.
So do we get, well, paint then right off the assembly line to make sure we get all the use of it?
Yeah, I, I never, I had never heard that until we actually got into finding out the way that it works. It all goes back to the VIN, the date, the date of when it came off of the floor, right from.
So it could've sat on the lot for three months.
Absolutely.
For a year.
For a year.
Yeah.
You get a holdover for a year, it still doesn't matter because that VIN number, whatever that's associated with coming out of the plant, is the date of when it actually goes and starts your twelve-year run, so.
Sounds like they're in partnership with the auto company.
It must be, what, the two thousand seven? So, you know, whatever the date was in two thousand six, well, two thousand seven because it's two thousand nineteen, the spring, when, when it has to go out of production. As far as with students, we can use it for staff and all those fun things, but it cannot transport students. And they're used.
Any questions on Operations Report? Okay, moving on to six point four, the Superintendent Report.
I have a few things, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Heidi. Just some quick updates, and it's more for, some of this is for public awareness also. So I had a, I've had a number, number of meetings with Morehead Administration. We have some work to do. We will be doing Achievement and Integration is a new funding stream that the board will be looking, will be having the school boards approve an Achievement and Integration Plan for fiscal twenty, probably taking place in March is when that'll come. So this year is a planning year for it. If you recall when we did the levy on the pay eighteen, payable nineteen levy that you'll be approving again in December, the final, has funding, there's an equalized, about seventy percent of it is paid, is state aid, I think it's a seventy, thirty. I think it's a seventy-thirty split, if I, if I recall, as far as most, majority is state aid. So, between Morehead School District, I think they have five, six hundred, over six hundred thousand that they have coming in. We have about a hundred thousand on the Achievement Integration Funds. And again, that's to help look at not just gap reduction on achievement, but also the other piece that I, I think works cited as far as administrative team is ten percent of it is set aside just for professional development, looking at cultural awareness for our staff and our students. So, it's a good, we, we can utilize the funds between the two school district to provide some programming, professional development between the staffs of both school districts. So, we're working on that. Tamara Usulman, who is the Assistant Superintendent at Morehead, is taking the lead with that because she's been involved with it before. I've also met with Morehead Administration, the district level administration and Lakes Country and M State, a couple of meetings. We met again last week for about three hours on looking at the progress towards Career Academy. So, that again is something that is very much just in the developmental talks at this point. But because it has such a potential impact on, on bond referendums for both school districts, it's, it's definitely getting a lot of attention. And I, I think we have some very positive, very positive, the, the potential of having some programming facility and to utilize. And looking at a plan for programming, earliest implementation could be fall of two thousand twenty at the earliest. But again, it, it would take some of the pressure off the plans on, on the bonds for both school districts. And there is some very economical, we have a potential of a facility that would be highly economically efficient for both school districts. And as that materializes, hopefully, we'll know more in December. But for sure, by the time we go to the Leadership Conference down at MSBA, we'll have a much better idea on that potential. So, exciting, exciting times with that.
So, has it been mainly with Morehead School District or are you still talking with...
So far, it's, the, all of the early communication has been with Morehead, partly because Barnesville was definitely hot and heavy into a, a bond election. And so, I, I spoke with Scott last week, Scott Leslie over at Barnesville. And last Monday, they had a board meeting, so we haven't talked since that meeting, just to find out what their plans are as far as moving forward. Are they, are they coming back to the citizens, to the stakeholders for a November vote again? Are they looking at changing what the scope of their bond would be? So, there's, there's a lot of what-ifs out there. But, so the next steps are, will be the superintendents sitting down and, and looking at, okay, Barnesville, Holly, what, you know, what would be some of your, that you could bring to the table and what you might want to, you know, is it positive from your standpoint? So, as we, as we have those discussions, I'll, I'll keep you updated. But again, right now, it's so early into the, is this even feasible at this point? So, but we want to be as transparent as possible. It's just very early conversations about what if we did this? But again, exciting because I, I think there is the potential of actually being able to provide increased programming for our students at a actual decreased cost over what it would be for our individual school district to put in the CTE type of programming in our building into the bond because of being able to do it with multiple school districts to create some very good economic efficiencies with it.
Right, and we wouldn't have to target one area, we'd be going to other areas.
Exactly, exactly. We could, and so, it's, it's the idea of, of, of expanding the, the possible programming for kids. So, again, it, it, very early in the stages, there's a lot of planning. If this was even going to materialize, it would be spending all of the spring, all of nineteen, twenty, just having staff. That's where we, we start actually putting leadership together of the districts, actually having leadership of school boards, administration, staff, going to some of the locations of where these career academies are nationwide. There's some different ones down in Tennessee and, and what else not? Because if we're truly gonna do this, we've, we've gotta look at successful models. And, and that's gonna take a lot of months of planning for it. But again, it's, the conversations, the what-if conversations have been very exciting. I mean, to the point of talking about, if you think of when the Sanford Building was, was done architecturally, when they did the, instead of creating three D models of, of the, the rooms, they did all that through virtual reality. And so, they would have virtual reality rooms of just designing the actual medical facilities. And so, the students can get exposure to things like that. Those are the type of, of classes that the students could have exposure to because it would be working directly with the colleges for articulation agreements and working with business partnerships in the, in the medical fields, in, you know, the potential of the Sanford's, the Phoenix Industries, the RDOs, the, all those different companies. Again, months of work. The economic side of it is probably quicker, but the programming side would be where we, we bring in, that's where we get the staff more involved. You have the, you have the Brandins, myself and a, and a few others that sit down about the money side, but then we bring in the Lakes Country personnel and the principals and the counselors to sit down and talk programming. So, again, it's, I'm, I'm having discussions with the principals about just to keep them up to speed as far as where things are at. And we anticipate, the conversations I've had with Morehead's district leadership is that we're probably talking January, February is the time where we start bringing the principals and the counselors together on this because then they take over the programming side. Couple other things, Houston Engineering, been meeting, I've met with them. I've, I've given the board a, just a brief update. I expect specs on the potential land acquisition December tenth so that the board would be able to take action on a, on a potential land acquisition on the seventeenth. So, that will go out to the board as soon as we get that information. So, you should have it a week in advance as far as the specs on how much property it would actually be. I met last week with the mayor and, with Cecil Johnson and also with Chris Carlson, the City Engineer of Glendon, looking at, again, just make sure we're on the same page about the potential grant proposal associated with Seventh Street. And talking about the specific costs associated with that. We are anticipating this week for that grant to become available, the announcement on it. And all, all parties are, are up to speed. I, I talked to Cecil about when they have a city council meeting. Myself and maybe a board member too attending a city council meeting. And just talking about, okay, here's the long-term plans with the school district and how this could impact the school. So, I'll keep you posted on that when they get that meeting set up. So, lot, lot going on right now. And like I said, pretty exciting, the impact it could have with the bond referendum. And if you don't have other questions for me, Heidi has been taking a lead on some, not just professional development for our staff, but programming opportunities and, and for students and for our parents on some things, so.
Well, I'm gonna talk about two kind of sad topics that we have going on in our schools right now and that's the use of technology appropriately and also vaping. And so, those are two things that we're looking at, providing some information and knowledge on. Our high school, middle school student council members, some of them, most of them, were able to attend a leadership concert, conference in Brainerd. It was a couple of weeks ago, I think now. And they saw a speaker there that they came home pretty excited about and said that, boy, kids need to hear this. His name is Kent Milberg and he's actually out of Detroit Lakes. He was a thirty-plus years of an education, has retired now. And he started up, he's so passionate about this area, providing information on internet and technology safety that he actually goes to schools and other places, many schools, many places, and does talks on it. So, I started talking to Kent, who, side note, I used to work with him at Detroit Lakes High School. So, I knew him when he was a media specialist there, talking to him about it. And he, the things that he presents on is he talks about sexual predators. One of the things that's kind of scary is there's seven hundred thousand approximately sexual predators right now living in the United States. And they say one in six kids have probably been contacted on the internet somehow by a sexual predator, not knowing that that's probably what, what is happening. So, to raise awareness with kids about what that looks like. He also talks about texting and driving, which of course, there's lots of, you know, you go down Highway ten, those signs they have, they're always putting things up there about that. Right now, it says something about cyber shopping, pull into a parking lot, you know. And so, there's lots of things that are going on, but to raise an awareness to kids about that. Sexting and photo transmitting, that is real folks, it's something that we deal with. And we, our kids don't understand what that means when an eighteen-year-old receives something from a sixteen-year-old that is, you know, illegal. It's illegal anyways, but it's all, it's something that kids don't understand that they can be, receive some pretty severe consequences and, and that it's unsafe and scary. He talks about the addictive behavior about how our kids and adults are addicted to technology and what that looks like and what that does to them. So, we talked about really wanting, I brought it up with the six-twelve leadership team and have support from them to bring Kent in to talk to our kids at the middle school and at the high school, two separate sessions because we really don't have a place that we can keep all eight hundred-some kids. And so, we'll do two separate sessions and then, of course, the middle school one will be a little bit different than the middle school one. And he goes south in January and February, so we're hustling to get this done in December because we don't wanna wait till he comes back in March and April. So, we're looking at a date to get that done in December. And then at that evening, have any parent session, parent guardian, community, whoever wants to come. Because I think people are asking for it. They don't quite know what to look for, what that is. And so, we are going to try to take this as a community-based approach. We'll help at school, you help at home, kids, here's the information, this is what's out there. So, we will be, as I'm literally today and tomorrow, I'm hoping to get all of the times and place and everything solidified so that we can start advertising it to our community. We're looking at December seventeenth. And there's a school board meeting that night, so we're gonna try to do it around seven-thirty for the parent guardian one and then the kids during that day. The other thing that we are trying to get more information to people about is vaping. Wayne was just telling me that he saw in CNN that the usage is up by eighty percent right now. And I was talking to Officer Lee and he says that he's written more citations this year than he wrote all of last year. So, in two and a half months, he's written more, three months, written more citations this year than he wrote all of last year. Wayne and I also could both attest that we have been very busy dealing with discipline when it comes to vaping. So, we're trying to address that. You know, there's Minnesota State High School League, there's a lot of consequences that happen with the laws, with activities, with, in-school consequences. So, we're kind of dealing on the reactive end of it and we want to be more proactive and teach kids. When I, lack of better terms, caught kids or been aware of it, I could tell you even from last year to this year, the vaping devices look different and they're continuously changing. And it's hard to keep up with it. I will ask kids if they know what's in there that they've had and they don't always know. Or they think it's just juice, some of them know that there's nicotine in there, but honestly, it could be a variety of different drugs. I don't even understand what that is. And so, it is a scary thing. I asked them, would you bring a cigarette to school and smoke it? And they say no, but yet at the same time, they are bringing nicotine to school. So, there's just a disconnect there that we need to inform them more about. So, I asked Jeff, Officer Lee, to look into some resources for us. And he found somebody at Clay County Public Health, his name is Jason McCoy. And he will come out and there's basically four different areas that he can look at. One is doing a staff in-service training, kind of a show and tell. These are the different devices, this is what they look like, this is what could be in them, this is how they're using them, kind of stay on top of that. And so, we were looking at, in our, I think it's the twenty-first, right, January twenty-first is our next PD with teachers, having him come in and do this for all staff. Because to be fair, people can say, oh, it's happening in the classrooms and the teachers don't even know. Well, they don't know what to look for. Like I said, I do locker searches, I do things like that and, and sometimes I'll come across something and then realize it's a device or not even know what I'm looking for because they do, there is a variety of different devices that are out there. So, I think provide that to our teach, to our teachers and our staff would be important. There's also a Train the Trainer. And this is where he comes out and he does professional development and provides curriculum. And this can be to our health fax teachers, our school counselors, our social workers, the principals, basically people that maybe work more in educating students about what, what happens to them or what is it about with vaping. So, that's the second piece that he could do. The third one I'm really excited about is he can't come talk to a large group and I think it has to do with the grant, how it's, how it's set up. But he can come talk to pockets of students. And so, one of the ideas is we had was having maybe the NHS and the Student Council kids at each site. Get, he can work with them, do some education pieces on it. But a big part of it is helping them develop a campaign or a project to support the non-use of vaping devices and what it is. And so, that'll be another piece we'll be working with them on. And then he can provide parent informational meetings. And kind of like I just talked about with the tech piece, technology piece, we'll be looking at doing the same thing where we'll have an evening, trying to find a time when there isn't a game or a wrestling match or something going on. I, I think I did kind of find a date today, I think it was in February, that maybe would work. So, hoping to get, that provide that too. The one piece that we're still looking for is a presenter, and I have a lead on that too. I just haven't had time to research that, just found out about it, to have somebody come in and talk to both the middle school and high schoolers again. So, just wanted you to be aware that those, that we are addressing those things. With that, I think one of the things that's interesting to me is our eighth graders in our Abbot's Team class did a Socratic seminar, which is where you, facilitator gives a, maybe controversial topic and you learn to listen respectfully, present your views respectfully and kind of have a, and, and come to some conclusions. And they were very adamant about, I have on my phone here, they were, these were the things that they wanted to see happen. These are eighth-grade kids and a consensus of this. Make sure vaping is discussed during the DARE program in elementary. That'll be something we'll be talking to Jeff about. Have Officer Lee present on the legal consequences of underage vaping. Again, that, this will be covered in that Clay County, but I thought that was the interesting, they wanted that too. Have a healthcare professional present on the dangers of vaping. And lastly, talk about it more and earlier, make it, make it a priority. Show us what, what it, what it does and what it's about. it, what it does and what it's about. So these are from the mouth of Abe, so to speak. So we are very, we're working hard to get those two opportunities for our students and our staff and our community. Wayne and I will be working on that together. One of the things that, that Kimberly talked on that I thought I wanted to just let you know is that we, you know, the elementary's participating in the backpack program and she's right, our middle schoolers are hungry. We have quite a few students that we just in the office pack food for. And I had a young man last, last week or the Friday before, I guess it would have been, he came, I packed a bag for him and gave it to him and he came back, an eighth grade boy, they don't do stuff like this, he came back and he said, Mrs. Critchey, I appreciate you, because I gave him a bag of food. And so Angie Helgerson is working really hard with Food Bank and she is actually going, her and I and a couple others are working on getting a food pantry upstairs that will actually be stocked and it'll be delivered, we can order online what we want, it'll be delivered here and we'll be able, we're looking to get somewhat of a backpack program started at the middle school. Kids can't learn if they're hungry and if they're worried about that. And a lot of them are worried about little brothers and sisters. So we're going to be working on that. And then it just, I just want to say a few things, this right now, the time between Thanksgiving and Christmas is really hard in the schools. Brian's probably talked to you about this before, we see a lot of behaviors. It's not a happy time for everybody and we definitely see it in schools, but I am, sorry, I'm just so touched by the number of people that help these kids. You know, we have people calling us for donations, we have the Dilworth Firemen that sponsor our families. I was at Dilworth Lutheran Church and they had fifty-some gifts that have been bought for kids here at Dilworth Elementary and I know there's something like that that goes on at Glendon Felton and it's pretty amazing to be part of that. So, any questions about any of that? I'm not an expert on either of those two subjects, but trying to be, unfortunately, learning to be, so. Do you have any questions about that?
No, I'm glad to hear that you're addressing it. I think that, you know, the vaping came so fast at people that they were blindsided by it. Because I think people honestly thought, well, I'm not going to smoke, but this vaping is healthy. Anytime you're putting chemical in your body, it's not healthy.
It's nicotine.
But they didn't know any of it, you know, they put it on the market and then we're going to find out what's in it later.
We saw, we saw some in service, it was a flash drive.
Yep.
Identical one, I couldn't tell the difference.
I've seen the ones that are, you know, larger pipes, I've have, I've gotten a couple flash drives, the newest one is kind of a badge, it looks like a triangle, you know, there's just, there's an, and I'm sure there's ones out there I haven't seen.
As a respiratory therapist and dealing with nicotine addiction, we don't even know the health, we don't honestly as a profession know what the health effects.
And I nag on them like crazy when I, you know, about that stuff, it surely.
And it's just scary because it's a synthetic product, you don't know what you're putting in your body.
So we're still looking for a speaker that can talk to our kids, if anybody knows.
Yeah, well, thank you for addressing it. I mean, I think being proactive is the better way to be.
Do we have like an open door or anything like that? I don't know what you'd call it, but our school does that, where there's a room where kids will go. I mean, I've donated stuff, my kid, you know, and it's always age appropriate, but there's so much stuff, people donate and then literally you go up the stairs, the counselors do and you pop the door, it's everything from hygiene, I mean, they got like clothes racks and stuff.
We're trying to get that going. What we have, what we've had at the middle school is we have a basket that says, take something if you need it, we put out school supplies, you know, we used to hoard all this stuff and just give it to them if they ask, now we put it out. We started putting it on our backpacks and just put a sign up and said, if you need one, take one, it back to school, we put out notebooks, we put out pencils, we put out anything. I had one young lady who was homeless a couple of weeks ago and I asked her, I mean, literally homeless, I asked her what she needed and she asked for pencils. You know, that's a pretty small request, she got lots of pencils from us. But again, we, one of our counselors put out that we had a homeless family in our school and our staff just, it, pots, pans, whatever, they were outfitted pretty quick. So yeah, we're working on doing that because it is a pride thing too, about being able just to go get it without having to ask and go through someone. No one likes to do that.
If we could make that a little bit more community-wide too, throughout the district, that would be great.
Oh, I mean, the elementary teachers just take care of their kiddos like you wouldn't believe and they, they, the thing different about them is they have those twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty, whatever they are, in their classroom, whereas, you know, eighth grade, seven, how many kids do you have Kimberly?
Hundred and what? Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five kids. And so that's where it's, we want to make it more accessible for them.
Right.
Yeah. And get, yeah, you're right, get something going like that at the high school too.
Well, put it out to the community members as well, you know.
About donating, you mean?
Yeah. Yeah.
Put something in the, you know, rubber paper, we're looking for donations of whatever.
Yeah, well, like the homeless situation, that happened so fast, you know, with two days and so, and then she was in an apartment in a week and so we just kind of did it, but yeah. And so we're, we're cleaning out closets and storage to make more room for stuff like this. So, yeah.
It's, it's amazing how, I mean, we've, we've had to do so many walkthroughs of what stuff can we get rid of so, because there is a perfect, what we think would be a perfect location upstairs, but again, we're crammed on space. I mean, we just, we don't have a lot of places. When you go in the boardroom, we've, now that we've taken out so many of the maps, those closets have, you know, that's where we're putting a lot of the coats and what else not for the elementary, right in there. They, they said, you don't mind, do you? I'm like, absolutely use it, it's a perfect location for it. But otherwise, we've had tubs of backpacks and what else not, sitting in storage upstairs because it's there and a lot of times people don't know where this stuff is. So the idea of just getting one storage room where they can have all this stuff up there and so that the counselors, the principals, the leadership can just take advantage of it would be great.
Well, Tracy and Nikki went through and did inventory in all of our closets, all of our storage spaces, and so we're looking at organizing those better so we know where everything is. So especially when you have two schools in a building, it's easy for things to get kind of disorganized pretty quick, so.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're doing a great job with this.
All right, we will be moving on to seven point one, the approval of the November thirteenth primary meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Riley, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on, the consent agenda under business and the claims and accounts.
This month we have a hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
All right, there's a treasures report and the Minnesota liquid asset activities account. There's a donation from the Knights of Columbus and two resignations, one from Andrea Anderson, paraprofessional, and Marcia Spicer, paraprofessional. There's a motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Second by Bobby. Any discussion? There are no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point one, this is the certified seniority list that was in your Any questions on that?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is, moving on to nine point two, this is the twenty eighteen, twenty twenty transportation contracts, all of our vendors have signed their contracts. And that is Setters and Leaches and Richards and Keels. Anybody have any questions on that? Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay and a second.
Second.
Second by Scott, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, at this time we will be going into a closed session to talk.
Sally?
Sorry.
To move the motion before you're done with changing the court meeting.
Oh, okay. That was our, we don't, I don't think we need to have a motion on that, that was changed in the agenda at the start of the meeting, right?
Yeah, because it'll, it's just announcing that where it'll be.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. We'll be going into closed session to discuss superintendent evaluation when we come back. The only thing that's left on there is announcing the fiscal personnel committee and the school board meeting, which is December seventeenth, and take note that it is here, not at the high school. So we will take, this is seven twenty-two, oops, I'm sorry, I take that back, seven twenty-two, we'll go into closed session and then come back to adjournments.